All right, we will call the July 27th, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting to order. I will ask everyone present to please turn off or silence your cell phones. Would the Secretary please call the roll?
All right, Mr. Martinez.
Here.
Ms. Richardson?
Here.
Mr. Dupriest?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Rose? And Ms. Garner, I am here. We have a quorum.
Very good. I'll ask everyone to please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this evening's agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting. Can't remember the date now.
I would move we approve the minutes for June 29th, 2023.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the June 29th minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Would ask the county attorney's verification of jurisdiction, please.
Good evening, Planning Commission. The county attorney's office has reviewed portions of the case files on today's agenda. It finds that item numbers A, B, and D have met all notice requirements and jurisdiction is properly before this board. As to PLT 2023-19, Grassland's at Comanche filing number seven. This was missing the posted notice requirement and will need to be continued to... Greg, do you know the date? August 10th, 2023, in this room. At 6:00 PM.
Thank you very much. Okay, then we will call the first case. Case number PRC 2023-12.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name's Greg Barnes. I'm with the Community and Economic Development Department. And as mentioned, tonight's first case is for fry hatchery. There are three parts to this request. The first part is a rezoning application. The proposal is to change the zone designation on 53 acres from agricultural one to industrial one. Second part of this application is for a conditional use permit to allow extraction and disposal, which is mining, in the A1 or I1 zone district. It's conditional on both. So we want to, you know, have both options depending on the outcome of the rezoning. And then the third application is a conditional use permit for inert fill operations, which are necessary to reclaim the site after mining has occurred. A little background on these sites, you're probably familiar with them because you heard a case back in March. So originally, a conditional use permit for mining and inert filling was approved by the Board of County Commissioners in 2015. And it was given a seven-year... I'm sorry, it was actually 2016, but it was given a seven-year approval. There was also, in conjunction with that, a subdivision application. And with that subdivision and as conditions precedent for the mining operations, there were significant road improvements that needed to occur on the site to prepare for the proposed uses. And so the applicant's seven-year clock started ticking, but they had road construction to build, which ate into their time available to do the mining project. That was set to expire in March of this year. And in January, the applicants came to the county to seek more time. On these applications, we identified a new conditional use permit was going to take a minimum of four months, so there wouldn't be time to do that. And in order for the applicants to keep their business afloat and keep their employees employed, we suggested they pursue minor amendments to the expiration dates on those two conditional use permits. And that is what came before you this past March. It was a Planning Commission decision to extend that expiration date to September 12th. At the same time those minor amendments were occurring, the applicant was pursuing these applications that are before you tonight, which would... are being proposed to extend the mining and inert filling conditional use permits for an additional seven years so that they can complete the project, which is already underway. A little background on the rezoning, because this is a little different. So the applicant, currently for their mining operations, as part of a mining process, there is a processing process which happens with the extracted materials that come out of the earth, and then they're processed and then exported out of the site. So there's already facilities for the applicant to do that processing on the site. Since the applicant has those facilities on the site, they want to import material from other sites onto the site to process it here because they already have that facility and it's already going on with their mining operation. So when they contacted us back in January for the extensions, we identified that if they wanted to do this, it would have to be a use that's permitted in the zone district. And the zone district currently is agricultural one, which would not allow this use. So we looked at what options were available. And one of the options would be to rezone the property to industrial one, which would allow for that use to take place. And so that is why there's a rezoning application accompanying these two conditional use permits. And I'll talk about the rezoning a little bit in a minute, but that's the context behind why they're rezoning. But first, let's start with the property and, you know, the stats behind the property. So the property itself is 53 acres. It's located here. It's to the north and west of I-76, which is this red line running diagonally through the screen. More specifically, it is on the northwest corner of Monaco and 88. So this is 88th Avenue here. Monaco is here on the east side of the property. A closer view, this area was from 2020, but it shows mining operations occurring on the site. So as I mentioned, the original approval was back in 2016. Also, I mentioned this already, but the property is currently zoned agricultural one. It has some adjacency to the city of Thornton and Commerce City. There's also a lot of agricultural one in the area, but there's also some industrial two. There's a little bit of industrial one here. And then there's commercial uses along the interstate. Or I'm sorry, commercial zoning and uses. If the proposed rezoning is approved, the zoning map would be changed to look like this. The county's comprehensive plan has designated a future land use in this area of industrial low. And that industrial low designation is consistent with industrial one zoning. It is not consistent with agricultural one zoning. And therefore, it could be argued that this application advances the goals of the comprehensive plan. When reviewing an application for rezoning, there are four criteria of approval. That includes consistency with the comprehensive plan, consistency with the purpose of our development standards, consistency with the zone district standards, which in this case, an industrial one zone district has a minimum lot size of one acre. This is 53 acres. And then the request is compatible to the surrounding area. For the conditional use permits, the criteria of approval is a little more complicated. I'll go through these as quickly as possible. So they... we want to ensure that the uses that are being permitted are appropriate for the agricultural or the industrial one zone district, whichever zone district applies, that there's consistency with the purpose of our development standards, there's compliance with specific performance standards for the use, that the request is harmonious and compatible to the surrounding area, that the applicants have done their best to mitigate off-site impacts that others around them may feel, that the site is suitable for the use, that there's a convenient and functional layout, that there's utility and services that can support the use in the area. And then for the inert filling, there are other specific criteria, which includes a benefit to the county, compliance with the comprehensive plan and zone district standards, documented ability to comply with standards specifically for health, that it won't create traffic congestion or hazards, that the inert fill is compatible with the area, so the overall topography at the end of the fill will be similar to what's in the general area, and that it won't affect the health and welfare of the community. The applicant provided this site plan, their aerial photo is fairly recent. So 88th Avenue is this curved street here. This is I-76. And as you're going down 88th Avenue westbound, there's this driveway, which is intended to be a one-way that takes you into the site. And truck traffic goes through to the north and then to the east and then exits out of Monaco. This area would be intended for stockpiles and is currently being used for stockpiles as well as this area here. The area with this red outline is the area which still has to be mined or excavated. There's about six acres left, so the applicant is proposing this conditional use permit just for the six-acre area. And then the area outlined in green is the area where the inert filling still needs to take place. And so, I want to say this is 28 acres off the top of my head, give or take a few, but I think it's 28. And so that is the boundaries of the fill and the mining operation. There's a silt pond here and a freshwater pond here as well. A few images, these were taken from Monaco. Looking to the north along Monaco, looking to the south, off in the distance you can see I-76. This is looking to the east. These are actually commercial properties, I think over here. And then to the west into the site at their exit. Within the interior site, this is kind of what it looks like. So this is actually looking from the main one-way road to the right where the stockpiles are located. During the referral period for this, we notified our property owners and occupants within 1,000 feet. We sent 77 notices on this request and we didn't get any comments. We also didn't get any comments on the extensions as well. So during the referral period, we did notify referral agencies. A few of them had initial concerns, but they've all been addressed. There are no outstanding concerns from any of those agencies. So ultimately, it does benefit the county to have these operations continue because the site has already undergone mining operations and the site still needs to be reclaimed. The rezoning does advance the goals of the comprehensive plan and it meets the minimum zone district standards for industrial one. And then the operator, it's important to note, has had no history of violations in their operations on the site as well. So staff is recommending approval of the rezoning and conditional use permits with 18 findings of fact, 19 conditions, and one note. And the only item I want to update you on is condition number nine. Your staff report says that the tracking pads would be installed before February of 2023. That's been changed to 2024. Sorry for the error. Otherwise, I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Are there questions from members of the Planning Commission for staff? Mr. Rose?
I just have a question. You mentioned no traffic congestion. I just know from living near years, 88th and I-76 is an extremely congested intersection now. So I'm kind of curious, is this a major increase in trucks going in and out of that area?
So I... okay, I'm hearing from our engineers that the answer is no. That hours of operations are outside of peak hours. And so that does help. I know that was an important part of the discussion with CDOT on this case in that the truck traffic try to avoid those peak hours to avoid that congestion. So that's the best answer I have at this time.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Thompson?
So you just mentioned a change to a development standard to require them to put a tracking pad in by sometime in February of 2024. Is there one currently in place and should there be one in place already?
There's not one in place and it should be in place already. I do not have the backstory of why that wasn't done, but we wanted to make it a condition to ensure it got done.
Why would we like to wait until February instead of doing it, you know, as soon as possible? Pick sometime, you know, as soon as they get approved essentially, if they were to be?
Though quite candidly, I had no idea how long it took to install one of those. So I picked six months and there was no objection from the applicant. However, if the Planning Commission feels that it can be done faster, staff has no issues with that.
We might want to ask the applicant about that. Thank you. While I have your ear, is there any height requirements or restrictions for the stockpile?
I might need to follow up with that. I believe that there might be.
That might be something we could ask the applicant about as well. Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Any other questions from members of the commission or staff? All right. With no additional questions, we will invite the applicant or their representative to address the Planning Commission. Please be sure and give us your name and address for the record. Either place.
Oh, is it here? Yeah, I can...
Anywhere there's a microphone is good with us.
Okay. Great, great. My name is Joel Bolduc. I'm the Land and Environment Manager at Albert Frye &amp; Sons. And with me is Ben Frye, CEO at Albert Frye &amp; Sons. And I have a short presentation here. It's 12 slides. Some of the information is redundant with Greg's presentation because he did a very thorough presentation. So those areas I'll just skip over quickly. First, about Albert Frye &amp; Sons, the company was founded in Adams County in Henderson in 1962 by Ben's grandfather. He was a Swiss immigrant. And when he realized that the Santa Gravel under his property was worth more than the beans he was growing on top of the property, he decided to start a Santa Gravel company. The picture on the left there shows Ben's father on the right and his uncle on the left in the late 1960s. And then the picture on the right shows the five siblings, Ben and his four siblings, that are running the business today. From left to right, it's Al Jr., Joe, Lisa, Ben, and Tommy. The Hatchery Site is located in western Adams County. I'll just point out that it's an existing permitted operating site today. And we call it the Hatchery Site because there was a fish hatchery formerly located on the site in the northwest area where the ponds are. Our request is to extend the mining and the inert fill CUPs for seven years out to 2030 and to rezone from agricultural one to industrial one. As Greg noted. Greg also covered the timeline, but real briefly, the CUPs were issued in 2016. The subdivision road improvements were completed by May of 2018. And then we constructed the plant and then we began mining in January of 2019. And then in... after we had mined and created the excavated hole there, we began accepting inert fill in November 2021. Today, the mining is 90% complete and the inert fill is 20% complete. When we talk about mining, what we have on site is one crusher and four wash screens. And this equipment produces aggregate products of various sizes for various applications, such as like things that go into concrete and asphalt and other landscaping-type products. The... and those materials go into our infrastructure, such as housing, roadways, and light rail. The inert fill consists of really two types of trucks that come to the site. One is inert fill, which is dry material. So for example, if you're building a house and you have to excavate 10 feet of dirt to put in the basement, that dirt has to go somewhere. And if it can't go on-site, it needs to go off-site. And it would come to a place like our inert fill site. Also, there's vac trucks, vacuum trucks, where most frequently, when some... an entity is doing a utility locate and has to dig down, see how deep a pipe is or a line, or to access that pipeline. If they're in the water table, they're going to need a vac truck to keep the area dry while they're working in there. And that would also come to our site. A few inert fill best practices that we do. First, we use a muncher, which is the middle picture there, where large chunks of concrete, for example, are broken up into smaller pieces, less than 12 inches in length, in order to allow for redevelopment. It keeps the material, the overall site allows it to be compacted by not having big giant chunks present. Also, we have a compacted shale liner on the site so that it encapsulates the inert fill. The inert fill is safe. It's inert. However, to reduce risk, we put in a compacted liner for an extra safety measure. And then finally, we place the material in lifts. So rather than just putting 40 feet of... filling 40 feet, we do 10 feet at a time so that it's in lifts and it compacts better so that you don't have an uneven surface a few years after you've completed it. Regarding the environment, we have all of our permits for the site, including the air, water, and stormwater permits. The wet material results in minimal dust from the processing operation. Also, the four screens are all wash screens, so the material is wet as it goes through the process. We also use a water truck for dust control on the roads. Another item that we did last year, Russian olive control, we had about 20 Russian olive trees. It's an invasive species and we went ahead and cut those down and treated the stumps. This is a map of the site, the reclamation map. And basically what it shows is Monaco Street is on the right and the eastern two-thirds of the site is going to be backfilled up to the grade of Monaco Street. And then there'll be a slope going down to the west side of the property, which is in the floodplain. And then trackout is our biggest challenge. We haven't had any complaints at the site in the last seven years, but trackout is our biggest challenge. And it's a more recent issue because when we only had aggregate trucks coming to the site, they stay on the gravel road and get loaded and then go out the exit. And so trackout was not an issue for the last five years. It's really been in the last year that we've had an issue with trackout because the inert fill trucks that started really last fall, in the fall of 2022, when our other site closed, all the inert fill trucks started being directed to the Hatchery Site. And they go off-road. They go into the pit and they're the ones that are picking up the mud and bringing it to the exit. So there are several measures that we have in place to reduce trackout. The first is that from the scale to the exit gate is paved. We have a contract sweeper that comes two times a week to sweep the area. And then we have a brush sweeper that's pictured here. This was just brought in this month. And that we are operating daily, Monday through Saturday, to keep the paved surface clean. And then in answer to the earlier question, we already have what would be called a tracking pad at the site. We have vehicle tracking containment, which is a rock that's about six inches in length. And there's a whole section, it's probably 200 feet long, where the trucks have to drive over that. And the intent is to shake off the mud from the tires because it's bumpy. And we are also planning to pave the exit. Right now, the aggregate trucks come up, they get on the pavement, they go across a scale, they stay on the pavement and they go to the exit. The inert fill trucks do not go across the scale because we do not need to measure their... weigh their truck because they're empty on the way out. They get processed on the way in. So they right now are going across dirt and then across a vehicle containment, tracking containment rock, and then to the exit. And what we're going to do is pave, do additional paving so they have to travel across 400 feet of paving before they exit. And then we'll put the VTC material prior to the paved area. And we believe this will be sufficient to address the trackout issue. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Bolduc. Are there questions from members of the Planning Commission for the applicant? Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. I had another question that I'd asked about the stockpile height. How tall have they been stacked since you've been there?
Gosh, I would say the tallest pile is probably 30 to 35 feet.
This is Ben Frye and I reside at 8621 Holly Street. And the piles are 35 feet tall, but it's in a depression basically. So they don't... the piles don't exceed the height of the berm that's along 88th.
Okay, super. Thank you. Another question about the... really the ultimate question I'm trying to get to is, do you need to change your reclamation plan because of the proposed timeframe that you're now changing?
The... I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
The reclamation plan calls out specific kind of timeframes and percent of reclaimed area and such. Do you need to change that with the state essentially?
With the D.R.M.S. Department of Reclamation and Mining Safety? No, we don't need to change the reclamation plan. The reclamation plan defines what you need to do, but it doesn't necessarily provide a timeframe. The county... obviously, the county permits do have a timeframe. And we believe the seven-year extension will be sufficient to reclaim the site.
Okay. When I was taking a look through the application, it looked like there might have been some timeframes in there and a percent of area that had been mined and then reclaimed and kind of some expectations, maybe not specific. I'm not going to try to interpret that. You may want to at least revisit that and make sure you're okay with the state.
Okay.
No further questions.
Mr. Rose?
Yeah, one more question about transportation. I appreciate that you're talking about the trucks that be going later times. And they use that same route to exit every time. I noticed in the photos that there's some houses on Monaco, I think north of the development. At any time, do the trucks go north on Monaco?
Trucks are supposed to turn right on Monaco.
Yeah, so they won't be going north at all. They won't go north at all on Monaco.
Correct, correct. And generally, they all want to go to I-76.
And I noticed some hotels and gas stations... And I noticed some hotel, motels and gas stations along that area. Has that been a concern with any noise? You talk about different times for the trucks to go at night, I guess. Any concerns with noise at night from the motels by there?
No, I don't have any concerns. I mean, they're next to I-76.
Right.
So.
There's noise on both sides.
Yeah, and our, the traffic leaving the site is going, they probably don't get more than 20 miles an hour between our exit and the stop sign.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? No additional questions? We will invite the, if there's anyone here who would like to address the Planning Commission on this case, welcome to come forward and speak for three minutes. With no one coming forward, we will close the public hearing portion of this case then. Is there any discussion amongst members of the Planning Commission regarding this case?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Richardson?
In the case of PRC 2023-12, I would make a recommendation of approval move forward to the county commissioners based on 18 findings of fact, 19 conditions, and one note.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Would the Secretary please pull the commission?
Mr. Dupreez?
Yes.
Ms. Garner, I vote yes. Ms. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson? Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
And Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Your decision is unanimous.
Very good. This will be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners meeting on August 22nd, 2023, at 9:30 in the morning in this room.
You very much.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. We'll call a five-minute recess if that is acceptable.
Thank you.
All right, are we prepared to resume?
Yes.
Very good. Everyone, we will call the next case on this evening's agenda. Case number PLT 2022-49. Case name, Pecos I-76 Industrial Park, filing number eight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. Nick Eagleson with the Community and Economic Development Department. And I'll be presenting the Pecos I-76 Industrial Park, filing number eight. This is case number PLT 2022-49, and is located at 6045 Lepan Street. The request is for a subdivision replat, and this is to reconfigure seven existing lots into three. And this is on approximately 14.6 acres. A little bit of background, the site currently consists of two filings. The first one is filing number three, which was approved in 2003, and then filing number six, which was approved in 2002. A subdivision replat is required to reconfigure those parcels and create, in three lots, and having those consistent and all under the same filing. Here's a look, large aerial view of the site here in the center. Pecos Junction RTD Station is just directly adjacent to the west. Pecos, Pecos Street further west, I-76 to the north here, and then I-25 to the east in the distance here. Here's a closer look at the site and again at those parcels. There's two very small slivers that are kind of hard to make out, but those are north and south here along the western portion of the site. And then again, Pecos Street to the west, I-76 to the north. Now, the current zoning on site is I-2 for the northern portion, then I-3 industrial to the south. As you can see, it's mainly surrounded by I-2 and I-3 industrial zoning. The future land use designation is mixed-use commercial and is surrounded by a mixture of mixed-use commercial as well as industrial low to the southeast, and then institutional to the west. Here's kind of just a crop out of their replat document. I just wanted to illustrate what the three lots would look like if the replat is approved. Lot one is to the north here. Lot two is to the southeast here, and then lot three to the southwest. This is Lepan Street located adjacent here. When looking at the criteria for subdivision replat, we look to see that it complies with the standards and regulations as well as any original conditions of approval, that there are no non-conforming lots being created, that the replat is in keep, in keeping with the purpose and intent of the subdivision regulations, and that it will also not adversely affect the public health, safety, welfare of the community. Here are some photos from the site. The top left is looking directly adjacent to the east property. This is across Lepan Street. Top right here is looking down Lepan Street towards the northwest. Bottom left photo is looking into the site towards the southwest, again from Lepan Street. And then this photo from the right is looking towards the south with the site located here on the right. During the referral period, staff notified property owners and occupants within a half mile of the site. A total of 224 notifications were sent, and staff did not receive any comments. Staff did not also receive any concerns from any referral agencies that were notified. With that, staff does feel that it complies with the standards and regulations and is also in keeping with the purpose and intent of our subdivision regulations. And staff is recommending approval of the subject request of PLT 2023-49 with four findings of fact. And this will be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners on August 22nd, 2023, at 9:30 a.m. And here are those four findings of fact. Staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Regelson. Are there any questions from members of the Planning Commission for staff? Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. I was having difficulty finding the access for lot three. Could you point that out?
Yeah, so there's an access easement that's been in place for some time that you can see kind of runs through the center of the site right here from Lepan Street. So that's where lot three will be gaining their access or continue to take access.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, we will invite the applicant or their representative to come forward and address the Planning Commission. Please give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name is Diana Crusoe Jenkins. I'm with the law firm of Otten Johnson, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the property owner. My address is 950 Seventeenth Street, Suite 1600, Denver, Colorado 80202. As Nick identified, we're requesting a replat from seven lots to three in order to reconfigure the property and better reflect the current and continuing operations of the site. I won't recount what Nick said. He covered everything that I think is important for your decision. As you can see, this meets the criteria, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crusoe Jenkins. Any questions for the applicant or members of the Planning Commission? Okay? I will invite anybody here who would like to address the Planning Commission regarding this case to come forward and speak. Since no one is coming forward, we'll close the public hearing portion of the case. Any discussion amongst members of the Planning Commission regarding this case?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Richardson?
In the case of PLT 2022-49, Pecos I-76 Industrial Park, filing number eight, I would make a recommendation move forward to the county commissioners based on four findings of fact.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would the Secretary please pull the commission?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson? Ms. Richardson?
Yes.
Ms. Garner, I vote yes, and Mr. Dupreez?
Yes.
Unanimous decision.
Okay, then this will be forwarded on to the Board of County Commissioners meeting on August the 22nd, 2023, at 9:30 in the morning in this room. Thank you very much. Call the next case on the agenda. Case number PLT 2023-19. Case name, Grasslands of Comanche, filing number seven.
That case was the case that did not meet the legal requirements, and so that case will not be heard this evening.
This has been continued to?
August 10th at 6:30, or 6:00 p.m. in this room.
August 10th, 2023, 6 o'clock in the evening in this room. Thank you very much. We'll call the next case, case number PRC 2022-13, Oxen Free at Welby, formerly Cosimi Farms.
Thank you. So this case has three parts to the requests. The first part is a rezoning of 25.6 acres from Agricultural One to Planned Unit Development. The second part is a preliminary development plan, which would establish that planned unit development to create 265 residential dwelling units on the site, and then a major subdivision preliminary plat, which would create 10 lots and four tracks. The site outlined here is located to the north of East 78th Avenue, to the east of York Street. It's not quite at that intersection, but it's just a little off. And a closer view of this site shows it's largely vacant. There is a single-family house here, which would not be part of the development that would be raised if this development came to fruition. As mentioned, the site is zoned agricultural one, and the county's future land use designation, this area is within the Welby Subarea Plan, which has a future land use designation for this area of mixed neighborhood. First, let's talk about the rezoning from Agricultural One to Planned Unit Development. The criteria, criteria of approval includes consistency with the comprehensive plan, consistency with the purpose of our development standards, compliance with the minimum zone district standards for planned unit development, and compatibility to the surrounding area. As I mentioned, the applicant wants to rezone this to PUD. There is a minimum lot size of PUD that this exceeds. This is a 25.6 acre piece of land, and so it does conform to the zone district standards. If you look at the surrounding area, there are a mix of zone districts in the area. There's R1C, which is a single-family residential zone district here. There's commercial zoning off further to the west, agricultural zoning to the south. There is a planned unit development, which I now know is industrial to the south. And then there's industrial zoning located to the east, and industrial zoning to the north, as well as an agricultural one piece here to the north. In terms of the preliminary development plan, the criteria of approval includes consist, or compliance with the comprehensive plan, consistency with the county's development standards, compatibility or design to mitigate any externalities with the, you know, existing land uses on the site to create harmony in that respect, conformance of the county's transportation plan, and not having a detrimental impact on adjacent properties, consistency with applicable drainage plans that any unique or unusual circumstances are mitigated on the site, consistency with any approved development plan, which there actually isn't for an overall development plan in this area, and then compatibility to the surrounding area. So the preliminary development plan is shown here. I don't want to sound like a broken record because you did hear this a few weeks ago. So I am available if you have any questions on this. But ultimately, there is a single-family house plan for these areas with the darker shading. This area in the southern portion is intended to be, is intended to be paired homes or essentially duplexes. And then townhouses are what's planned for this area. And it's important to note that there's a plat with 10 lots, so a lot of these would have dwelling units that share lots that are maintained by a homeowners association. In all, they're proposing 85 single-family dwellings, 62 family dwellings, that'd be 30 structures, and then townhouses, 120 townhouse dwelling units. Maximum height would range between 35 and 40 feet, and the maximum density for this overall development would be about 10.1. Just to compare with our existing zone district standards. So an R1C zone district has a maximum density of about six dwelling units per acre. R2 would allow for 12 and a half dwelling units per acre, and R3 would allow for 14 dwelling units per acre. The current zoning, as an agricultural zone, only allows for 0.4 dwelling units. In terms of maximum height, so the applicant is proposing that the single-family and duplexes be 35 feet in height. The townhouse product is what would go up to 40 feet. And you can see that the maximum height would be substantially more for what is proposed in our standard zone. A couple of conceptual architectural arrangements for this single-family home. This is for the duplexes on the left and the townhouses to the right. As we mentioned at the last hearing, the Welby Subarea Plan does identify this as a mixed-use neighborhood. The specific intersection is shown with an example of having commercial retail on the lower floors and the upper floors being residential. This was something that we have had a lot of discussions with the applicant about, but the applicant has opted not to include any commercial products on this planned unit development. They want to move forward specifically with just a residential product, so that is what is before you. There is open space provided within the planned unit development. The applicant has met the county's open space requirements. There is a pocket park on the southwest corner of the site. And then on the northeast corner of the site, there is an amenity center that would serve the neighborhood, which includes a pool, fitness area, outdoor courts for various lawn games. In terms of the criteria for a major subdivision preliminary plat, we're looking for conformance to the county's subdivision design standards. We're looking for utilities to serve the subdivisions such as water and sewer. We want to ensure that any topographical conditions have been identified and addressed as best as we can. We want to ensure there's adequate drainage infrastructure and public infrastructure to serve the development. We're looking for consistency with the comprehensive plan and subarea plans, consistency with the county's development standards, and compatibility to the surrounding area. As I mentioned, there are 10 lots in- As I mentioned, there are 10 lots in all, multiple dwellings on an individual lot, which could be allowed within a PUD. But there are also various tracks that are being proposed as well. So, these are where the tracks and lots would be located. This is what the site looks like looking from 78th to the north. These are some single-family and houses with industrial uses on the north side of 79th, which we can talk about in a minute. But from 78th Avenue, this is looking to the east toward the Nyberg Creek. This is looking to the west toward the Assumption Church. This is looking south directly across 78th, and then north through the site. During the referral period, we sent this out to all property owners and occupants within 1,000 feet. There were five unique comments. Some of those comments came from multiple people during the referral period. The, we'll start with the support because it's easier to talk about. They, there were two letters in support of this because they feel like it improves the neighborhood and provides housing, which is an important resource in the county. Three of the comments, comment letters that we received were in opposition or had concern. Those concerns were addressed at the last hearing, but some concern about compatibility, but mostly about street access for those adjacent residents and businesses on the north side. So, as we talked about at the last hearing, there are the single-family houses and light industrial uses that are located here. 79th Avenue has a western terminus at the Lower Clear Creek Ditch, and it has an eastern terminus right here at the existing Cleveland Street. And for anybody that wasn't at the hearing last time, that was a big source of concern because anyone who lives in this area or does work in this area is going to have to go through this development while construction is being going on to access 78th Avenue to exit. June 29th, we had a hearing about this. There was a lot of concerns related to that. A summary of some of those concerns included that access on 79th Avenue. It included the classification of Clayton Street, which is essentially the north-south street that would run through the development as proposed, that would connect 79th and 78th, the routing of truck traffic through this residential site, the mix of uses as defined by the Welby subarea plan, a connection to the Nyberg Creek Trail to the east, and a right-of-way vacation on the eastern end of 79th Avenue, which if vacated, would create a terminus for 79th and not allow any future connections to the east without right-of-way acquisition. And so, let's talk about these issues one by one. 79th Avenue connection to York. This is what we've been working on since the hearing. We've met multiple times with the applicant, and the applicant has agreed a commitment to extend 79th Avenue to York Street. They have given that commitment as part of their final plating. There was a limited amount of time between June 29th and today, so it was impossible for the applicant to submit plans, revise plans to us, and have that reviewed by staff and the public. So, their plans that are before you have not changed, but they have given that commitment, and we'll talk about how we can codify that commitment in a minute. Back to the classification of Clayton Street. So, hard to tell from this map, but Clayton Street would be a street that would run about right here through the development. There was some concern that even during construction, that is going to be a potential place where truck traffic would need to go, or maybe if there's an incident here on York Street, truck traffic might go through the site. So, the applicant has also committed to making the Clayton Street right-of-way a local industrial standard per the county's requirements. The only caveat to that is the local industrial street standard does have an attached sidewalk at a specific width. And so, in, we'll talk about the conditions in a minute, but in codifying that, we want to add some language that would allow the applicant the ability to create a detached sidewalk with a wider width, if that is preferred, and it is preferred by the county. So, we've added some language in there to plan for the future and plan for a better pedestrian experience while allowing for that right-of-way for the truck traffic. So, the next item was routing the truck traffic through the residential site, and that hopefully will be addressed by the local industrial street standard. I think it's also important to note that the 79th Avenue existing roadway, as well as the connection to York, they've also committed to that being a local industrial street standard as well. The mix of uses as defined in the Welby subarea plan is unchanged. The applicant has no interest in doing commercial on this site. So, that is an unchanged item that was discussed at the hearing. Connection to the Nyberg Creek Trail. This item has been a little complicated. There's not going to be much of an update on this. There are currently negotiations or plans in place for this property that the county are involved in. And at this time, we do not want to commit the applicant to providing anything that may interfere with those plans. So, after talking with the parks and open space and cultural arts department, at this time, they had concern about a connection being made at this point. But by the time construction happens, those plans may come to fruition, and there may be more clarity. So, that item, staff is recommending that we punt to the final plat because we'll have a better idea of what those plans are at that time. And then finally, the right-of-way vacation on the eastern end of 79th Avenue. So, if you may mention there's, or may remember, there was a small piece of land here, which on the plat did identify to be vacated as part of the final plat, and the applicant has agreed to forego that plan so that if 79th Avenue is extended beyond what is proposed to be Fillmore Street here, the county would still have that right-of-way. So, that's an update of what has gone on since the last hearing. It has been a lot of things in play over the last four weeks. But in light of all this, staff does feel that this application conforms to the subdivision design standards, that there's adequate utilities to support the site, supports the housing needs in the county's balanced housing assessment, and conforms to the minimum PUD standards for area and open space. So, staff is recommending approval of these three applications with 21 findings of fact, three conditions, and eight notes. Do you want to talk about the conditions? Because that is how we are hoping to codify their commitments. So, I have added this as a revised staff report, which I provided to each of you today. But condition number two, I'm going to read it into the record. The applicant has agreed to construct and improve East 79th Avenue from York Street to the proposed Fillmore Street, which is that street that runs north-south on the east end of the development. East 79th Avenue shall be constructed to Adams County Standard Local Industrial Street Standards from York Street to Clayton Street. Additionally, the proposed Clayton Street shall be constructed to the county's local industrial street standard as well. These improvements will be included in the final plat application related to this project. Exceptions to the county's standard local industrial street standards can be made to allow for detached sidewalks and excessive sidewalk widths. And then finally, to allow for the possibility of future expansion on East 79th Avenue to the east, the applicant has agreed to strike the "to be vacated" language from the preliminary plat approval for portions of East 79th Avenue east of their proposed Fillmore Street. One other change was because of the continuance note number two. We have changed to August 15th, 2025, which would allow the applicant two full years as required in our regulations from the Board of County Commissioners date. So, that's all I have for you. The applicant does have a presentation as well. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, if I may make two notes for the record?
Well, me.
I guess three. All right, so in front of you, Mr. Barnes, as he just noted, provided you the updated staff report for this case for PRC 2022-13, which includes those updates he just went through, as well as on your, in that packet. There are two additional letters that were not included as public comments. One is a July 13th, 2023, letter from EG USA, which is labeled "Objection to Application for Oxenfree at Welby." And then the second one is a letter from Jim Lee at Commercial Real Estate Services, a letter dated June 7th, 2023, regarding the retail viability of the Cosme Farms locate, or location at York Street and 78th Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Are there questions from members of the planning commission for staff regarding this case? Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Appreciate your presentation. You may not be able to go into more depth about this, and I understand that, but the connection to the Nyberg Creek Trail, give or take, this application has adjacency to that, except for that darn ditch that's in the way. I imagine a bridge is relatively expensive to get across a creek. If they headed another direction to try to get across and connect to that, it sounds like there's some negotiations that are going on from the county's perspective that make that difficult at best. Is there, if, since they're connecting 79th Avenue out to York, is there a possibility of a sidewalk northbound on York to get to the Nyberg Creek Trail? That be something that would be a reasonable alternative?
Help me understand a little bit more. You kind of lost me for a second on the directions.
Yeah. Well, if you just see it, it's right up in my head here. We had talked about trying to have them connect to that regional trail that's immediately north of their site.
Oh, up here.
I'm sorry? Yes, right there. Yes.
Okay.
And, you know, absent the creek, they could readily do that. So, in trying to find an alternative to that, it sounds like they can't very easily go east at this point because the county has some negotiations or something that they're working on there. Is it, is it not possible for them to head due north from their site and cross the creek?
So, I don't, I don't want to speak for parks. I do know that that is, okay, I'm going to let Matt Emmons answer that question.
Hello, Matt Emmons, Community Economic Development. You're absolutely right. The connection to 79th to York Street will provide sidewalk up to the Nyberg Creek Trail. We are in the midst of improving, our public works is, in the midst of improving York Street. It will have sidewalk on both sides.
Awesome. No further questions at this point, then. Thank you.
Other questions for staff or members of the planning commission? Okay, then we will invite the applicant or their representative to speak to the planning commission. Please be sure and give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening, commissioners. Eva Mather, Norris Design, 1101 Banning Street, Denver, Colorado, 80204. Pleased to be here tonight on behalf of Core Spaces for Oxenfree at Welby. I was asked to give the full presentation from our previous hearing, but I'm going to go ahead and abbreviate. I think it was pretty long last time, so hopefully everybody's okay with that. But if you have any questions, feel free to stop me. I do have all of the slides here in this deck, so if I speed through any that you would like me to pause on, please let me know. But the full deck is here in the packet. I just may be skipping ahead through many. But there are a few I'd like to touch on. Our team is here tonight to answer any questions. Again, my name Eva Mather. I'm here tonight with Evan Remney with Redlands and Allison Stavish with Core Spaces. And we can answer any questions after my presentation. With regard to the context map, I think it is important to point out and highlight how many nearby amenities make this location ideally suited for residential development. Particularly, that is, it is approximately within one mile of five schools in addition to having great access to all of the trail systems, including the Nyberg Creek Trail, Colorado Front Range Trail, the Platte River Trail, and the Clear Creek Trail, giving it exceptional access, trail access, to anywhere you want to go in the Front Range. And not to mention the great proximity to the rail line, which I know is a priority for the county. It's a 12-minute bike ride to both park and rides, and a six-minute drive is basically equidistant to both. And then kind of zooming into the context map, you can see really how close it is to all those trail systems. It really is unfortunate. It is across that ditch from the trail in this location. But there is also a trail connection right here, and we were just discussing where those other trail accesses are in this location. I'll get to that later in the presentation as well. We did spend some time talking through mixed use and, mixed use and the comprehensive plan, and I would like to touch on that again. The Welby Subarea Plan does identify this site as mixed-use neighborhood. And I want to point out the difference between the area on the left and the area on the right. We have been focused a good deal on mixed use as it relates to commercial and residential together. The area on the left is the mixed, is the land use map before the Welby Subarea Plan was put into place, and this site was identified as agriculture. The area on the right is the land use map after the Welby Plan was put into place, and it identifies this neighborhood as mixed-use neighborhood. But you can see how much area within the Welby Subarea was added as mixed-use neighborhood. All of that area in red is the mixed-use area that was added to the Welby Plan. So, when we stop and we talk about what is mixed-use area, it is that entire zone. The, the letter that we provided to you does discuss what would be an ideally suited area for commercial development. And I think if you haven't seen a for lease sign up in, up in that empty commercial space right now, then maybe you're, there are lots, so just look around. I would implore you to look at those and identify that there are some right there on the corner of 78th and York that are zoned for commercial. So, and that is the most ideally suited space in close proximity to this site that would be a commercial site. So, that is where we'd like to see a commercial site be, would most ideally be located because that's where the most traffic near this site goes by, besides, of course, over on Washington. So, so that's what the letter that we provided to you, I talked about that at the last hearing. Wanted to just touch on it again to say, when we look at mixed-use neighborhood, it's not just our site. It's everywhere that is the space colored in red. So, so we're hopeful that the, that commercial can be cited somewhere in this mixed-use neighborhood. It just may not be residential over there. Mixed-use neighborhood as defined in the Welby Subarea Plan allows for a mix of single and multifamily while being close proximity of existing infrastructure, which we think this site is, meets. And in addition, it meets the goals for Adams County Comprehensive Plan and the Balanced Housing Plan by providing for missing middle housing opportunities. I'm going to speed through the preliminary plat and the preliminary development plan. About the pocket park, I'm going to talk about this a little bit more as I continue through the presentation and I get to sort of the follow-up. I do want to point out some of the really great architecture again and some of the additional architectural requirements that have been provided in the PDP by Core Spaces. We did talk about these sections and some of the buffer areas, of course, and, you know, these were the the different street sections. We have made a different commitment. So, we'll move on to, to the next presentation. So, we are again. So, we are again, preliminary plat continuation. I was prepared to give a follow-up presentation, so, so we'll just get started here. So when we left last time, what we heard was, we heard some great feedback from all of you. And in addition to, we heard some great feedback from the neighbors. We were asked to explore York Street, the York Street connection, which Greg explained, and some of the commitments that we are willing to make. So go ahead and show you those in our words and with our graphics here again this evening. So so here's that connection from 79th to York. We, we spent some time with staff talking about this, not just, you know, saying, yes, we can do that. We did spend, you know, we jumped right on the phone with staff and want to thank Public Works and Planning for helping to coordinate with that so quickly. We confirmed that the, again, that that right-of-way exists. We coordinated with Public Works about the York Street Capital Improvements Project currently under construction. We did discuss that this connection at York Street will need to be a right-in, right-out due to the proposed median and some existing intersection spacing. That is not at our request. That is a Public Works, that's a Public Works requirement. But, but the street nonetheless will exist. But we're discussing the potential cost-sharing opportunities with Adams County staff, including potential for TIF funding to be finalized with the board at the final plat and the FDP stage. We also understand, and we've been talking to the church about their design process. They're currently in the process of designing the, their box culvert across their process, across their property. So we will coordinate on our extension, our, the street extension with their design efforts. So we, we have been actively, actively working on this coordination. With regard to the local industrial street section, indeed, we can make this local industrial along Clayton and along 79th. We discussed this with staff and happy to make that commitment. That changes the flow line to flow line from 36 feet to 44 feet. And, and along, along Clayton and on 79th from Clayton to York. And then this is the extension of 79th that we will no longer be seeking to vacate. We had to do a little bit of redesign for our fieldhouse to make that happen, including some buffers for the home, the home in this location and for the fieldhouse. But we were able to accommodate those changes and make that happen. Regarding the trail, yep, we had the same thoughts that you did. This current access, while there is no sidewalk from this location to this location, there is a pretty extensive shoulder that I imagine people are using to walk along. It's 0.15 miles to get to this trailhead right here. And then along 79th Avenue with the CIP project along York, it's about a quarter mile to get to the Nyver Creek trailhead up here. We did hear a little bit about the park location, and so wanted to talk about that as well. And the discussion that this site felt a little bit like an enclave. We're hopeful that the extension of 79th Avenue does help this feel less like an enclave, but in addition, wanted to talk about this, why this park location is so meaningful. 78th and York and the Assumption Church have been discussed and described as the heart of Welby. And this park location, perhaps I did not describe the site and the park and the open space amenities well enough. The amenity is located in this location to create not just a transitional use, but also to create a welcoming environment and really create a front door for this community. It reacts in a positive way to, to the church and their, and their crosswalk and extension across to their, to their park amenity across the street, but also provides a gateway for the greenway and the detached walk along 78th Avenue. As well as the front doors that are lining 78th. So I wanted to just show you a little bit about what this space is now and what we hope that it will look like. So we do create a little before and after of what this street is today and how this space will, will help create that front door along 78th. It just creates a park and a front door and a welcoming gateway as you, as you travel down the street. Really responding to the church and that location. And finally, once again, I'm gonna touch on the mixed use. At the last hearing, it was asked, where does the mixed-use neighbor begin and end? And again, I'm gonna show you the area in pink. The proposed plan is compatible with the primary, primary character and use, the purpose, the criteria for designation that are all identified in the mixed-use table within the Welby Plan. These additional homes could help support any commercial development in the future and attract a retail commercial user. Not to mention the county's extreme need for attainable housing and housing for the missing middle. This is supported with the Balanced Housing Plan and to provide a variety of housing at, at a variety of income levels and diversity. And it reduces physical impacts of growth by maximizing efficiency by using existing infrastructure. So we would respectfully ask for your recommendation of approval with all of the revisions and we're available for your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayther. Other questions from members of the Planning Commission for the applicant? Okay, Mr. Thompson?
I have a quick question for Mr. Emmons. Talked briefly about the access at 79th Avenue in York and how that's going to have a right-in, right-out. And then there's gonna be a median in the middle of that. I guess my, my question really relates to potential truck traffic that would be coming from those existing businesses that are north of this site. Is that median and that access as 79th would connect, is that going to be able to accommodate the truck traffic in and out? I realize it won't be a left-in, but...
It should find, be able to handle fine. The idea when we were looking at this was traffic would come north up York Street, turn in, turn left into the site, and then, or excuse me, right into the site. And then get to the, the commercial and then take Clayton Street out and back to York Street on 78th. So they'd be doing a loop and it would effectively cut the traffic and, the truck traffic in half for the commercial uses out there. But yeah, the applicant is designing that entrance with the proper turning radius to make the trucks turn in there.
So they could both enter and potentially exit from 79th?
They could exit and go north, but the assumption is the truck traffic's gonna be heading south of the highway. They could, they can turn both ways.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant?
Uh, yeah, over here. Mr. Chair. Uh, you mentioned something. Sound interesting. You said something about missing middle. I'm not sure I know what that means. Could you explain?
Sure. The missing middle housing is somewhere in between a single-family house and a, and a multifamily house. It's usually the duplex and the townhome, and it meets, it meets a middle, an income housing level that is neither low-income housing nor, I would say, high-income housing.
Okay. So what, what would you expect the market rental rates to be for those proposed missing middle units that you just described?
I don't have the, I don't have the rental rates for, for the specific, for these units, but with a a rental rate that is a, that includes duplexes and townhomes, it would likely be in that missing middle. It usually ends up in that missing middle column.
Okay, so you don't know how much these are gonna go for?
And Allison is gonna come up and help answer that question.
Gonna give us your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Hi, everyone. Allison Stavish. I'm representing Core Spaces. Our corporate address is 1643 North Milwaukee Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, 60647. So this is a market-rate community. And so as we get closer to construction of the products, you know, we will be setting rents based on comparable market, you know, driven examples in the area. So this isn't a subsidized housing or low-income housing, but it's going to be generally consistent with other rental rates in the area. I will say that we try to achieve a discount from what owning a home like this would cost someone. But typically, we are a slight premium to, you know, a standard stacked apartment type because you do have, you know, your own detached or attached garage and detached home. So we can't really set, say exactly what the rents are going to be right now, but once we're on the site, constructed, they'll be set based on market rate.
Okay, yeah. I was, I was asking mainly because these, these are very unique for this area. There's really not much comparable in that area within Welby or even South Thornton and anywhere near there. Not that I'm aware of, at least as far as single-family rentals or missing-middle rentals and stuff like that. So I was curious to know how you would come up with that compar, comparables if there's nothing nearby like that. So
Right.
are you looking at other comparable developments in the Denver region, or is it in the West or nationally? And I, I mean, if you can't tell us how much they're gonna, you expect to rent them for, I'd just like to know what some comparable areas would go for to see, you know, what, what's the difference? What, what kind of, what kind of incomes and folks are gonna be able to afford this place? And how would they fit in with the area of older development? It's very, you know, that you find in Welby, and I just kind of want to know how they, they might fit in with that, with that regard.
Yeah, so I mean, again, the best I can kind of offer is, you know, we would look at, I see what you're saying. There isn't really a direct comp to what we're providing. But we do look at, you know, rental housing in the immediate area. And most of that is going to be your more traditional stacked multifamily. And really, the best I can give you is, is the range of, will be a slight premium typically to that, given the amenities we offer and the uniqueness of the product. But again, we do strive to be a, a discount from what a mortgage would cost to purchase one of these townhomes.
Okay.
So unfortunately, that's, that's really the best I can offer now. I mean, additionally, just given the time it takes to get through the entitlements process, build and escalation of costs, it's just really hard to project what our rent rates will be, you know, two, three years out by the time these be built and up for rent.
Do you know of any other developments in the region that are following this? I, I think I know of one that's in proposal in Thornton, but I don't know much more about
Yeah.
about it. It's way further behind in the processes this, and other than that, I, I don't think I've seen anything quite like this before. So do you know of any other examples in Denver area that you could provide?
Yeah, definitely. So Core Spaces doesn't have, we haven't constructed a community yet in the Colorado market, but we are looking, working on a few other sites across the metro area. A good example, probably I could point you to of a built community for build-to-rent are the Avila Communities. Avila Eastlake in Commerce City, I believe. And let me think. The other one is, I think there is one out in Murphy Creek out towards the airport. There are a couple of examples of, of built rent in the metro area. Yeah, the next metro Avila developments. I think there are two built. They're a little bit different in that those are, they're somewhere between an apartment and what we're proposing. They're all surface parked, so they don't have like the attached garage that we're proposing with this product, which is another reason we'd be a slight premium probably to that comp. You know, and they're, and they're typically single-story. Kind of more like taking the apartments and just separating them out, whereas we're really trying to set ourselves apart by really offering a community that when you drive by, you wouldn't know if it's for sale or for rent.
Okay. Thank you for the answers.
Other questions from members of the Planning Commission?
I have a question, and it may be a little, a little premature in the process. But given the, sort of the new situation with the roads with both 79th Avenue and Clayton, a month ago, you had talked about sort of the phasing of how the roads would be built to be able to make sure that the neighbors to the north there continue to have access. How does that plan change with the extension of 79th Avenue over to York? Or does it?
Evan Remney. I'm with Redland. It's 1500 West Canal Court, Colorado, 80120. I believe your questions in regard to construction phasing, is that correct?
For, as far as the roads are concerned, yes.
Okay. You're right. It is a little early right now to go through construction phasing, but I would imagine that we would utilize 79th Ave as one of the first phases of construction since that's success for the industrial at this point, and we could use that in combination, some sort of access to ease temporary center.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you very much. We will invite anybody who's here who would like to address the Planning Commission on this case to come forward. Be given three minutes to address the Planning Commission. We'll ask that Mr. Barnes or someone activate the timer.
I'm Stephanie McCarthy. I'm the administrative assistant at Assumption Catholic Church. Father Nick Larkin asked me to come on our, on behalf of our staff tonight and speak to you. Our address is 2361 East 78th Avenue, and that's Denver, Colorado, 80229. And this is the letter that he's put together. Says Assumption Catholic Church stands in full support of Core Space housing development on Cosme Farm property. For over 100 years, Assumption Church and School has been the heart of Welby. Today, over 900 families call Assumption their spiritual home, and over 150 children attend our schoolhouse every year for Christmas and Easter Masses or annual summer bazaars. People from all over Colorado and other states travel back to Assumption. They speak about the great fondness of growing up in Welby. And while the area has been developed and changed a lot, the charm of Welby has remained in their minds and hearts. The church is excited to welcome new families to our neighborhood. Their presence means new life, new energy to a historical community. The strength of Welby is founded not only on its history, but in its diversity. Residential homes and commercial and industrial businesses have long coexisted here, and we hope that it will continue long into the future. As a staff member, me and my community are eager to welcome people to our neighborhood, to our church, and to our school, as well as to share in many community events our members host. People who move into this new development will hopefully find joy in reciting next to such a beautiful house of the Lord and owe the Lord's love and protection. They will hear the bells ring from the church staples throughout the day and be reminded that at all times is a gift from the Lord, that He is with us, and one day He will call us back to Himself. Myself and the church financial council and our entire community are excited to see Core Space build these homes, that a new chapter of history can be written, one that honors what has come before and what will be a blessing for Welby, Welby for decades to come. We urge the commissioners to support this development. Thank you, and may the Lord bless you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Barnes, we do not see the time elapsed on the, on the timer here. Thank you. I wasn't sure if it was working or not.
Well, that I'm not sure about.
So you'll just, you'll just throw things at whoever's overtime?
Just say beep. Just say beep, Greg.
All right. Any, is there anyone else who would like to address the planning commission on this case?
Hi, good evening. My name's Brandon Deagle. My address is three zero nine zero zero East one hundred and forty-fifth Avenue, Brighton, Colorado, eight zero six zero three. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Assumption Catholic Church Parish Finance Council. Just like to reaffirm what Father Nick Larkin said in his letter, that we're very excited for the opportunity of this development. We think that, we think that this would greatly match and meet, you know, our church and school community. Would provide a great future and environment for future families and students in our community and would like to urge the commission to approve this proposed development. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deagle.
Hi, my name is George Mazzotti, Jr. I am a member of the Finance Council. I'm also a member of the Welby community. I live at seventy-three forty Race Street. It would be Welby, eight oh two two nine. I've lived there all my life. The community has developed itself over the years, and it's time to progress with the progression of new development into that area. It would be an honor to have new homes in that area so we can actually branch out into a new part of the development of the Welby area. I do agree with the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mazzotti.
Jay, we're good. The timer's working.
Hi, my name's Victor Frank. I live at seventy-four oh one Race Street, Denver, Colorado, eight oh two two nine. I've lived in Welby for the last fifty-five years, and I am a contractor. I own a business in Welby. I also own several homes in Welby. I'm confident that this project will be an enhancement to everything that we want, we've been trying to get done for many years. And I believe that commercial and residential can work together when it's designed properly. So I'm in total favor of this project and hope you guys are too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frank.
Hello, all. I represent EJ. My name is Nick Armstrong. Our address is twenty-five seventy-seven East Seventy-Ninth Avenue, one of the businesses north of this project. I did provide everybody with a sheet from our corporate office. Instead of me rambling through that, I just wanted to hit a couple of quick notes on it. Mainly, it comes back down to the tractor-trailers going through the property again. One of our main concerns is the PUD are therefore encouraged to, sorry, the residents of the PDP are therefore encouraged to congregate along the exact street. It intends to have tractor-trail use. Moreover, the clubhouse is situated to the far east of the PDP, whereas the vast majority of the dwellings are to the west. For those residents who, for those residents who clubhouse ultimately increases both, for those who, residents who reside in the west properties, they will be required to cross Clayton Street in order to reach the, the clubhouse, ultimately increasing both vehicle and foot traffic along the street. As is, there is a serious safety issue which should be addressed with respect to Clayton Street. One last thing. The PDP allows for, I believe you corrected it to flow line of forty-two feet is what I was hearing. This poses a multiple of problems for tractor-trailers driving through the neighborhood and increases the chances of accidents and injury to residents who are encouraged to congregate along the all-ray narrow Clayton Street. Moreover, canopy trees are proposed directly on both corners of Clayton Street, potentially reducing sightlines. In addition, East Seventy-Ninth Avenue will have the same constraints in inability for existing industrial properties and landowners to have tractor-trailers access their property in a safe and efficient manner as a high likelihood of a downturn impact on business. Additionally, on-street parking is proposed. However, the PDP does not designate the location on-street parking and contends that parking will be addressed until a final development plan is created. However, should on-street parking be proposed along Clayton Street, this will further narrow the road, decreasing the safety of any tractor-trailers on the roadway. The process changed in roadway to access the industrial properties poses a danger to not only residents of the PDP, but the existing industrial businesses.
With twenty seconds left. Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Is there anyone else here who would like to address the planning commission?
Jenna Pecha, I work for and am the heir to A&amp;M Steel, two-six-five-one, East Seventy-Ninth. I and my parents live right next door, two-seven-two-one, East Seventy-Ninth. It was mentioned at the previous meeting that there are many residences already in this immediate area. In fact, there are two, and one of them is us, the owners of A&amp;M Steel. My father, an Italian immigrant at the age of sixteen, started the business in ninety-four. We have been in Welby since two thousand and have lived next door since twenty sixteen. When my father is ready to retire, I will take over. Therefore, A&amp;M Steel will continue for several more decades. Both my parents and I have spent a good portion of our lives around heavy equipment and are accustomed to any and all nuisances associated with industrial business. We also know how to be safe around semi-trucks and trailers. Future residents are likely not accustomed to these things, and that is why we still have concerns regarding safety, compatibility, and the potential negative impact on our reasonable business operations. Namely, the non-compliance with Welby's sub-area plan for, division for mixed use, including commercial, would make this development more compatible with existing land uses. Third, the homes along Seventy-Ninth Avenue face our businesses, which we were not aware of at the outset. This creates an unnecessary risk for accidents and injuries with regard to truck traffic. We request that these homes face south to increase traffic safety for residents and truck drivers and better separate our two incompatible land uses. We appreciate the applicant's willingness to accommodate industrial traffic, but we cannot overlook or understate the prevailing issues regarding safety and detriment to the existing industrial businesses. And with all due respect, the individuals in support of this plan do not have businesses that will be directly affected, nor will they have to deal with heavy freight possibly not being delivered because the drivers don't want to go through a residential development. We respectfully request that the planning commission not recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Ms. Pecha.
I, I have a quick question for, for her. Could, could you?
I'm not sure this is a question-and-answer session for the public.
Yeah, I don't think we get to, they don't get to ask those questions.
I wanted some clarity on some of her testimony.
What kind of clarity?
How many trucks per day or per week or per month might be going to their business?
Would we happen to know that, Mr. Emmons, through any traffic study on any current traffic counts? Matt?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat the question?
Through their traffic study, do we have any information on current traffic counts?
I don't believe so, simply because this wasn't the site we were analyzing. We were looking at residential traffic.
Okay.
I'm looking from a compatibility perspective.
I understand, but I don't wanna make this a question-and-answer session with the public. Maybe the applicant has the answer to certain truck travel trips?
I actually have asked questions of people that testified before.
Okay. I'll let it go for this one question. One question.
Ms. Pecha, are you willing to answer a question? Ms. Pecha, are you willing to answer a question? It is your, it is your, your choice and discretion if you would like.
Essentially, the question is, to restate that, is how much truck traffic does your business have in a day or in a week? Or month, whatever it is.
It, it really depends on how busy we are. When we have a lot of work, we have shipments of steel coming in daily, or we have shipments going out, probably weekly. Slower times, it's less. However, our neighbors typically have trucks coming in every other day, multiple times a day, or it's, it's never less than to, every other day.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pecha.
The Green one?
Nope. I got that. All you have to do is speak.
My name is Richard Henke. I live in Arvada, Colorado, seventy-one forty-seven Dudley Drive, code eight zero 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 four. However, one of the originators with two doors down from A&amp;M Steel Pipe Valve and Fitting Company, we cannot tell how many trucks per day either, depending on business, as I think you can all understand. I can't figure out, and so with a lot of people that I've talked to, why would you want to jam a nice residential district like this right in the middle of a industrial area already? We had to go back as far, we've been there since nineteen sixty-seven, and we had to get it zoned from agricultural to I-one, back somewhere in those particular years. And it's been so good, and the fact is, to have traffic, that's, that's one thing. But why would you want to put that many residential people and kids and dogs and cats right in where, right in the middle of the field of football? We have a lot to be proud of in that area. We've helped a great deal. Remember old Frank Chancio? Number of people that was very helpful for us many years. And I understand that Seventy-Ninth is gonna be cut through. Is, is that correct? Did I understand that right? That we're gonna go ahead with that? That's, that's appreciated. That is very good. I've talked to the fire department, to Whitney Evans. She's a lovely lady, and she was all for that, but it has happened since I've talked to her. She's head of the fire department for, for our area there. And so, but I can't get a hold of her again to, to have her back up with you people to accomplish our mission, which you did it without us. Thank you. And it, again, it's, it makes a lot of sense, and it's hard for, to be able, now that they're working on construction, trying to accomplish better road on York going north. But it's not, it's, it's not a case of not wanting people and be there. It's just in the wrong place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henke.
Thanks for the.
Is there anyone else who would like to address, address the planning commission on this case?
Hi, and thank you for hearing us again. Tammy Schlegel, ten seventy-six County Road seventy-two, Bailey, Colorado. I am in a current employee with EJ. So our business itself, currently, we will see anywhere from two to three inbound stock trucks, heavily loaded, fifty-three footers, box trucks, a week. On top of that, we will get LTL trucks coming in and going out probably daily. Sometimes we'll get two to three a day. We have large UPS trucks that come through our area, again, daily, not only to visit us, but to drop off packages with our neighbors as well. Our customers frequently come in with either flat beds or truck pulling, an open bed trailer to pick up. We can have, we can have ten to twelve of those type of trucks and vehicles come in daily. So that's kind of what we see as far as truck traffic. I really, honestly, sincerely appreciate your commitment to putting Seventy-Ninth through. I do still have a few concerns regarding safety. One of them being, since it is only a right-in entrance or a right-out entrance, you did propose us doing the loop around coming down the new road. It won't no longer be Cleveland, whatever that knew Clayton. That puts us going right through the residential areas again. And it is still my concern that we're gonna have way too much pedestrian traffic on there mixed in with traffic, truck traffic. I don't know if there is any way to possibly put barriers there as a buffer against that traffic. I know that currently there is a proposed fence in between the new development and Assumption Church. I mean, if we could do something like that or some type of a bigger barrier for safety. Safety is my ultimate concern there. But really, that's basically my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schlegel. Anyone else here who would like to address the planning commission?
Good evening. My name is Norma Frank, and I live at seventy-four oh one Race Street in Welby, Colorado. I, like my husband mentioned, I've lived in Welby my whole life. My grandparents also were Italian immigrants who immigrated from Italy. I do want to mention or talk about some of the comments of not an appropriate place for residential area. I was personally a part of the Welby Subarea Plan. So that plan, I don't know how many of you remember it, but a lot of feisty Italians in Welby. So that plan went on for over a year. And as was mentioned before, the Assumption Church was identified as our kind of main hub in our, it's our town, what represented Welby the most when you talk to anybody about Welby. And that was a compromise. This area of mixed use was a compromise on the plan. To make it be a better development as, in terms of being, working with the church, being able to offer the community, and when CoreSpace came along, it was even better because it was a rental community, and we did a lot of research. And we really feel like that is a niche. There isn't much of that. There are people that are looking for that. We felt like it really fit what we had hoped and envisioned for. It will help our church. It will help our school. Both of those have been there for over a hundred years. And we do feel like we need to look forward. The land is, was not going to stay like it was, which was beautiful, farmland, but that's not the reality anymore. And so I very much, as a resident, as a business owner, as a parishioner, I also am a member of the Finance Council, support this in its truest form because it's what we've worked on for over ten years. So I hope you also will support this project with us. I appreciate your time, and I hope that the community on a whole will recognize what a benefit it will be. Also, in terms of the road, I don't know if many of you have looked at the road that's being used now as an exit road. It's a dirt road with not a lot of turning space on it. So it will be a giant improvement for those businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frank. Is there anyone else who would like to address the planning commission?
My name is Crystal Pecha, and I own twenty-six fifty-one E seventy ninth, and I live at twenty-seven twenty-one E seventy ninth. I also was there when the Welby Subarea was put into place, and that was all fine and good, except that I think then and now, the businesses that are along Seventy Ninth were not considered. So I'm asking that you really take a good look at it. I haven't heard anything here tonight about the turning radius on any of the streets that are proposed. I know they're wider, but the turning radius should be looked at. And I really feel that the residential and industrial do not go along together. If you're going to put something on that property, it should be commercial. That goes better with the existing businesses which are industrial. So I ask you to please look at that before moving this forward to the county commissioners or recommending that it go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pecha. Is there anyone else here who would like to address the planning commission regarding this case? There's no one coming forward. We'll close the public hearing portion. I will take a moment to thank every one of you who took the time this evening to show up, to make your comments heard, and to participate. This process is much more effective and much better as a result, so thank you very much. I will give an opportunity to staff or to the applicant to respond to the public comments as they feel necessary.
Thank you. Eva Mayther, again, just to address a few of the comments that I heard, we heard. To, with regard to the clubhouse on the east and the increased foot traffic across Clayton, I guess I'm hopeful that crosswalks and stop signs will help provide traffic control. There are some, I understand that there are trucks moving through there, but if there are people moving over to the clubhouse to the east, there will be stop signs and crosswalks for people to walk over to, to walk over to the clubhouse. There was mention of trees within sightlines. That is a definite no-no in the landscape architecture profession, so we'll make sure that that does not happen. There will be no trees within the sightlines. The exhibit shown is an illustrative, so when we come, when it comes time to do our final development plan, we'll make sure that there are no trees with any, within any sightlines. So that, that should not be a concern. Parking on street, we have been asked not to include any street sections within our preliminary development plan. If there's a request to not, to have no parking on the industrial streets, we will not have parking on the industrial streets. And we can, we can make that happen, but we've been asked, we are not allowed to have street sections on our PDP. So, and that's, you know, we can, we're right here, so we'll continue to have these conversations as we move through the final development plan. With regard to the discussion of the truck traffic, we're currently collecting that data now to be submitted with our final development plan and our final plat, so that will be a part of that traffic impact study when we submit that document. So appreciate the information, but we're collecting that data too, and we will be submitting that when we make that application. I, the safety concerns and talking about fencing potentially along Clayton and along Seventy Ninth, we've discussed having a split rail fence. That does provide a barrier, but also like keeps it open so you can see through. It creates a, that open visibility is also important for safety concerns, a different kind of safety. So we do like the idea of safety and would hope that that could be a great way to provide that visual and physical barrier. And the turning radius will meet all county requirements.
Thank you, Ms. Mayther. I have a quick question for, probably for staff, but maybe for the applicant. Do we know yet what sort of control will be at the intersections of Seventy Ninth and Clayton, Seventy Eighth and Clayton? Or is that based on what is found in the traffic impact studies?
Craft check, yeah. You'd look at that as part of the design of the whole project. So I mean, they give us a traffic study, but they'll have construction plans. And you look at templates, I mean, every template has to design for fire trucks anyway. And we're going from a fourteen-foot road to a forty-four-foot road, so there is going to be a lot more room for.
Well, my question was not about that. It's about control at the intersections, stop signs, traffic lights.
It depends. We'll look at that as far as how much where the traffic's going and if, yeah, if it needs, it meets warrants for a stop sign or probably not a traffic light, but you have to look at that as a part of the submittal. We haven't gotten to that far into the design.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Richardson.
Okay, could you remind me again what the total number of units are?
Two eighty, two sixty-five? Two sixty-five.
Two sixty-five, okay, thank you.
Herman?
Ms. Richardson.
I am still not happy about the fact of trucks going down Clayton Street. But since it appears that that's what's going to happen, you should consider, and maybe we should require, a pedestrian crossing light, not just pedestrian crossings. Since you have a good share of your development on the west side of the street and your clubhouse is on the east. Pedestrian crossing light would give some form of safety, a little more so than just a crossing. I see people fly through crossings all the time. And so I want to see a pedestrian crossing light, at the least, go on Clayton so that people can get across that street safely, or as safe as they're going to be the way people drive anymore.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments from members of the planning commission? Thompson.
I had a couple of kind of thoughts and comments. I kind of mentioned them last time, but I think it makes sense to kind of reiterate it. Just read a quick excerpt out of the staff report. It talks about the Welby Subarea Plan. It's designated a future land used for the site as mixed-use neighborhood. Mixed-use neighborhood category allows for a range of urban-level residential uses, including single and multifamily housing, combined with compatible and supporting uses and activities that serve the neighborhood and are developed and operated in harmony with the residential characteristics of the neighborhood. New mixed-use neighborhoods should only be in areas with adequate public infrastructure and services, schools, and access to transportation. I applaud staff and the applicant for making adjustments to the plan in accord with the planning commission's concerns. I think the access to transportation is improved. Seventy Ninth Avenue is now proposed to connect over to York. Seventy Ninth Avenue potentially could connect to the east. Those are improvements. In taking a look at the zoning map that we had up earlier, in my opinion, there is sufficient commercial in the immediate area on both, or on all four sides of Seventy Eighth Avenue and York. It appears that there is commercial zoning that is available for development and/or redevelopment potentially. Don't want to redevelop the church. I'm not suggesting that. The comprehensive plan calls for a mixed-use neighborhood. They're proposing a mixed-use neighborhood. Doesn't mean they're providing all land uses that would lead into a mixed-use neighborhood. They're providing a hundred and twenty townhomes, eighty-five single-family residential, and sixty-two family residential units. That's a mixture of residential units. And I appreciate that, and I believe that that meets the intent for the mixed-use neighborhood. I do think that there are potentially some conflicts. You have existing industrial uses. It's hard to have change. The comp plan calls for change to occur in this area, and this is essentially the first step in that change. It's not easy to have those conflicting uses be next to each other. I think that the access of Seventy Ninth Avenue will definitely benefit both the residential and the industrial uses in terms of how to get in and out of the area. I am supportive of the proposed plan as provided and amended. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Ms. Richardson.
I'd also like to see no parking on Clayton Street. People tend to, at this point, park right up to the corners, and that would affect truck traffic being able to turn safely. Besides which, when people walk out between cars, it's dangerous. So that's all I have.
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Thompson that the intention of Seventy Ninth Avenue is a critical improvement. I also, I would have preferred to see some commercial in here. If it's not viable, okay. I also, I think Mr. Thompson's statement of, you know, that there is a variety of uses in the neighborhood, even if it's not all contained within this development, I agree with that assessment as well, so. Is it my dream plan? No. Is it probably a good one for this area? I think probably so. There's any other comment or motions?
In the case, PRC twenty-two twenty-two dash thirteen, Oxon Free at Welby, I would move approval, move forward to the county commissioner, a recommendation of approval, move forward to the county commissioners based on twenty-one findings of fact, three conditions, and eight notes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would the secretary please pull the commission?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
No.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Richardson?
Yes.
Ms. Garnarival? Yes, Mr. Dupries?
Yes.
This will be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners meeting on August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, at nine thirty in the morning in this room. Is there any other risks before the planning commission? And the meeting is adjourned. Thank you again, everyone, for taking the time to come out and address the planning commission.